Together, and our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands on nation, like uh, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a very brief agenda tonight. We have no, um, no appointments. We have no town manager's report. We have no other business. We have no old business. We have one new business item, which is to schedule, um, to agree to a schedule for December through March of two thousand seventeen. And then we also have public comments in case anyone has anything they want to ask or, or make a comment about. So, um, our schedule for December is that we have one normal meeting scheduled for the twelfth of December. The twenty-sixth of December, the town offices are closed, um, as a holiday. And so, we are tentatively scheduled for the twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth for a work session. Which, which one is it? Or does it, does it matter?
What works best for you? Twenty-seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Yeah. So, we can pick either day?
You can pick either day.
Should we pick the twenty-eighth or the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh is Tuesday?
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh.
Alright, so we'll do the twenty-seventh and that'll be a, a work session. It'll be at the town offices, uh, it won't be here.
At five?
Five o'clock. So, that's an, that's an open session, uh, but we're only dealing with, um, uh, business for the end of the year. Sometimes we have, uh, tax abatements. We have year-end things that we have to...
Conferences.
Yeah, complete, yeah. Okay, so we'll do five o'clock. In January, February, and March, as, as you well know, we are quite busy. So, um, on January sixth, that's the last day for voters to petition the Select Board to include an article in the warrant proposing a bond governed by RSA thirty-eight, thirty-three colon eight A and RSA forty thirteen. We have a selectmen's meeting at five o'clock on the ninth of January. And, um, that's the last day to publish notice of the budget bond hearing on January seventeenth. The last day that voters can petition warrant articles, submit petitioned warrant articles is on January tenth. Uh, and that's also the last day to finalize a collective bargaining agreement, uh, for the annual meeting. On the twelfth, the Select Board has a work session scheduled at four o'clock at the town offices. Um, and I guess you've got here bond budget hearing preparation as well. Okay. January sixteenth on Monday, that's Martin Luther King Day, the offices are closed. The bond budget hearing is on the seventeenth, which is Tuesday, the seventeenth of January. Uh, in case it's snowing on the seventeenth and we can't have it, uh, it's the next day, the eighteenth.
What time is that?
What time is the bond budget hearing?
Six P.M.
Six P.M.
At the school?
Yes.
Yeah, it's at the school. The, um, twenty-third of January, it's a Monday, we have a work session for the Select Board at four o'clock at the town offices for deliberative session preparation. The next day, the twenty-fourth of January, is the last day to publish notice of the deliberative session. The twenty-fifth of January is the first day to declare candidacy, if you're going to declare candidacy for the, um, Select Board position or any other, it's any other position, right. First day is the twenty-fifth of January. Uh, the twenty-seventh, which is Friday, January twenty-seventh, is the last day to post a notice of the deliberative session held on February seventh. And the thirtieth of January is the last day to post the budget and the warrant. So, we have to have that all finalized and posted by the thirtieth. That's it for January. February, the last day to declare the candidacy, uh, a candidacy is on the third of January, which is a Friday.
You mean February?
I'm sorry, February. Sorry, we're in February. February third, Friday, for last day to declare candidacy, deliberative session is scheduled at six o'clock on February seventh at the school. Snow day for the deliberative session is on the eighth. And that's all there is for town actions during the month of February. President's Day is on the twentieth, and, uh, office, the town offices are closed on the twentieth. March seventh is annual town report must be available today, uh, on the seventh of March. The fourteenth of March is Tuesday, that's the second session town meeting, that's where we go and vote at, at the, uh, town garage. And the seventeenth, that following Friday, is the last day for candidates to apply for a recount, uh, not earlier than five nor later than ten days after receipt. So, Seal, what does that mean? Just tell me what that means.
If the vote is close between two candidates...
Oh, that I understand, but this last part where it's, uh, earlier than five nor later than ten days after receipt. So, that means after that Tuesday?
Right.
Okay.
If you do it four, five days of expired, and you have to do it within ten days.
So, sometime the next week.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I see. So, on the twenty-first, last day for, for, uh, for voters to petition clerk to recount ballots on any question printed on the ballot. Alright, good. And then the twenty-seventh of March, we have a regular scheduled, um, selectmen's meeting.
Question?
Yeah.
So, there's no Board of Selectmen meeting between the ninth of January and the twenty-seventh of March?
Correct. Other than work sessions. Other than work sessions.
Work sessions, yeah, that's it.
So, it seems like a pretty long time, didn't it?
How many work session even are?
I think we, I think there's two here, Rudy. Yeah, let me, let me go back over. Two. We have one on the twenty-third of January. And we have one on the twelfth of January.
Yeah, one on the twelfth.
Well, we got one in December too.
And we have one in December, so there's three altogether.
But those, the dates in February and March, when they normally meet, are still open? So, they have the flexibility if something should come up to hold a regular meeting?
Yeah, the, Ron, the, the regular dates would be the thirteenth of February and the twenty-seventh if we were scheduling regular, um...
Right, and I know, you know, you don't need to have a meeting the day before the deliberative session.
Right.
But it's just a long gap between...
Yeah, it is.
...first week of January and last week of March.
Yeah, if we have to have one, we will.
Yeah, we can, we can always post them.
If you have agendas like this, anyway, good view.
Yeah. Well, I don't, I don't think that'll happen.
So, Andrew, all the warrant articles gonna be drafted sooner rather than later?
All of ours will be drafted soon as we can, yeah.
Which would be when? Well, petition you can't control. So, when would you expect all those to be?
I'd say, um, we should probably have them ready by the, uh, first work session in January at the latest.
So, the twelfth. Be nice to have them before then if we get...
Yeah, we'll probably...
I mean, I don't know. Thinking of something, they oughta know it now.
Have to wait all down.
Right.
Well, yeah, we had, I mean, a total of forty-three, I believe. We had twenty-some ourselves. And as you know, we have...
We can make a correction on the warrant articles after January?
We do what?
We can make a correction, you know, on the warrant articles after January? After the first, uh...
There's a date that he just read that tells you it was the last day.
We can change that deliberative session, the wording. Any amounts can be amended.
Well, to try to say whatever the, the town manager gives to us, we gotta accept it to the time we go to the work session. That's what you, you know, we cannot ignore change before that.
Um, we can have any question.
Well, deliberative session can change the, the dollar amounts of, of any warrant article.
Well, if any warrant articles, it's written, you know, with a certain language that, uh, it's not quote-unquote acceptable, you know.
Well, you know, when we have the budget hearing, you know, that's the first time you'll, you'll see the warrant articles laid out where we can, we'll explain those. And then if there's wording changes, wording changes can occur after that meeting. At the deliberative session, all they can then do is change the, the amounts. And then, of course, in March, you vote on whatever is agreed to, so... Any other questions about the schedule? Any, oh, okay, so I, I think we're set. There's no conflicts here with anyone's other schedules? Okay. Um, our only other agenda item would be public comments, so, does anyone have public comments tonight?
I do.
Yeah?
I'm, I'm here in defense of Joe DePalmer of the Highway Department.
I'm sorry?
I'm in, I'm here in defense of Joe DePalmer of the Highway Department regarding the placement of a, a, a sign on the south side of the Ken Corren Bridge, which is, uh, gonna be mounted in a granite post...
Yeah.
...in place there. And, uh, and it seemed that the renter of the building on the other side of the, on the south side of the Evernose River, the objections to this. However, the owner of the house has no objection, but the renter, off the record, doesn't pay rent anyway, so why can't he have much to say about it?
Did he file a...
That's my comment about it, and I asked him, Joe DePalmer, in getting that thing in place on the south side of the river...
Right.
...in, in concrete and not having that guy run off everybody that tried to complete the project.
I, uh, we didn't, we knew nothing about this.
I haven't received any kind of a formal complaint, but, uh, that we had a contractor, Joe could probably explain it a little better than I, but who showed up to weld the plaque in place and it was, uh, approached by the, I can, but I think it's all been taken care of.
Oh, okay. So, is the plaque up?
Plaque is up, right?
No, no, the plaque, the plaque's not, uh, the plaque on the north side has been installed. This was a plaque that was on the south side.
So, it's gonna be one, one on each side?
Yes. It's installed in a granite post, um, Wednesday on the south side. And the tenant of the, uh, house, and he was, uh, speaking of, uh, objected strong, strongly today, and kinda drove off, uh, the contractor we had working with us to come off the plaque. And I appreciate any, uh, any sort of positive response, you know, going back towards that.
With town property, right?
Town have the right to be there, town have the right to fire it down.
We have a, uh, I have a recorded easement, uh, that I've been working off with that, so yes, we have a, we have...
Okay. Yeah. We didn't know he needed defense, but thank you, sir. We appreciate your defense of...
Well, I, I don't have very much to say. I try to be quiet when I can.
Okay. Thank you. Any, Rudy, you had your hand up.
First of all, I would like, if it's possible, please, you know, to have an answer to what am I asking you, okay? Uh, you've been reading the paper and, you know, a lot of comment in Little Town about the, the taxing.
The what?
About the taxing, the increase in tax.
Oh, right.
Alright, you know, I'm pretty sure you must have heard a lot of complaint, a lot of stuff like that. Uh, of course, you know, you're the chairman, you know, you can respond the any way you want. To me, you know, the situation is this, that the, the way you say it, it's like you don't know nothing about the dam, you know, the moral of the dam, that we would have lost some money on that day. It seems like this thing just come out, boom, before the time, which is not true, and you know that. If I'm mistaken, please correct me, I start. About that twenty million dollars that we lost on the day, okay? You guys knew before the tax was assessed, right? Or wrong?
Correct.
Thank you very much. Now, the point is this, why, why you guys know about that we would have lost the twenty million dollars, okay, on the day? That's assuming to recuperate, to compensate at this twenty million dollars. What's the easiest way? Explain it to the people of Little Town, not to me, to the people of Little Town. To compensate that twenty million dollars, you guys gotta raise taxes, right? Or wrong?
Correct.
Thank you. I don't understand that, are you, you know, are you keep, uh, pretend that the citizen of Little Town, right, you know, gonna compensate for twenty million dollars that we lost on the day, when, excuse me, just a second. When, I don't know, I don't know what word. When you got three thousand and one hundred properties in Little Town, okay, three thousand and one hundred?
Three thousand...
Three thousand and one hundred properties, okay? Now, the many properties that they said, and this to deal over the new appraisal, I tell you what it is. One is, uh, Walmart. Walmart property was assessed sixty million da, sixty million and nine hundred eighteen thousand, okay? With the new appraisal, went down six hundred seventy thousand dollars. That's assuming this money, they gotta come to somewhere to compensate. Another one, Tommy Depot. Tommy Depot property was assessed, was assessed seven million, two hundred fifty-six thousand. With the new appraisal, it went down nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, you guys gotta make it this morning. Rudy Johnson cannot give you this money, but you take a piece from here, 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 and you compensate. Now, you as a, not just as a chairman, you that run the town and stuff like that, I mean, I don't understand, do you guys sit down on the table and just to say, with the town manager too, and say, you know, say, listen, we gotta recuperate all this money, what are we gonna do about? Nobody here know nothing about. To that time, the manager will give you the budget, and we got all this increase. And the people, whoa, what are, this is time, this got to three people, they're gonna leave their houses, they can afford to pay taxes. These people, they go to our church, they say, Rudy, I cannot pay taxes anymore, I'm gonna move out. I mean, you know, it's kinda, but if you talk about, not with me, you can talk about, you know, I can't, because the people watching Channel Two, they do. And you explain to them, but in a newspaper, you're not explaining nothing. Same thing, you know, with them radio station. Phil Rivera says you two words, oh, the tax day went up, you know, two, two dollars if fifteen I said. I mean, did you wanna explain to the people, why you stop like that? Go to the town? You can't go to the town because you busy, it's busy, it's busy, it's busy, nobody give an answer.
But I thought we did. I thought we did explain, you know, the value...
Why they went out?
Why the values went down, and, and, you know, the, the agreement was negotiated, so when you put all of those together, you know, the eighteen million from the, from the, uh, from the dam, another, whatever it was, nine million from the other utilities, and then our residential properties dropped in value, sixty-two percent dropped in value, some went up in value, but the net was an eight million dollar loss. So, that's what brought up that thirty-three million that all of a sudden we didn't have to tax against because the values went down. I can't ex, I mean, I don't think we can explain to you, Rudy, um, this has happened before here and...
You explain to the people, you know.
Right, but this has happened before in the town. You know, some twelve, thirteen years ago, we were at thirty-five dollars per thousand, you know, it was, it, it's, if you look back in the history, it goes up and down, and sometimes the assessments based on the overall regional market or national market, they go up or down. You may remember six years ago, when our property values went shooting up, when the rest of the country was, was dropping in value because we were going through a serious recession. These things happened.
Maybe six years ago, Mr. Chairman, we paid less. Six years ago, huh?
Right.
Six years ago, the taxes over in Little Town, they were, okay, six years ago, which was in the, what's it, two thousand ten or something like that, it still was about twenty-two.
Right. But it goes up every year slowly. But we, this one was, was different. We hadn't overspent on anything. It was just the values, I'm kinda simplifying it, but the values of all of our properties overall went down. You know, the, the utilities went down, the residentials went down, as you pointed out...
The utilities went up, Mr. Chairman, they don't went up.
I'm sorry?
The utilities, they went up. Electricity and water, they went up.
Well, the, the, yeah, the, the billings did, right, but the values themselves went down, and I, we can't explain for you the, to you the technical reasons why that happened, but it happened. And, you know, Walmart went down in value, you're absolutely right, and so did the others.
Took up a million dollars, man.
But we didn't do that, you know, the assessors went out and they assessed...
But that's why they got a Mr. Chairman, because you, what you doing, you correct...
Well, I mean, they, they do the assessments.
You know, you can do something about, you know that.
Right, but they, they do the assessments, and then they give us the numbers, and that's all we had, and it all came together at the same time. And that, that's how that happened, and it's happened before this way, unfortunately. Every once in a while, that happens that way.
But you can't no say it, right, you know, Channel Two or to me or to this gentleman over here, that you cannot do nothing about with the assessment, because it's wrong. I got a letter here that from court that tells me, that tells me that, uh, you can do something about. It's my inquiry, you know, in regard to Little Town tax plan.
What does it say? What does it say?
What does it say over here?
Yeah.
That, after making my complaint, it tells you, you know, with my settlement, if I can not get it, you know...
What, you mean in terms of your own property?
Kind of answer stuff like that, a mine quip. I got two people I can send, you know, the complaint, and they say, what are they gonna do about?
Okay.
But what I have to say, Mr. Chairman, it's you, you know. I mean, your voice doesn't listen, you know, your voice doesn't mean nothing in Little Town. It, it, I mean, with respect, with respect, with respect.
Let me make something very clear about the chairman. The chairman does one thing here, he sets the agenda and, and changes the schedule. I have no other power. The three of us share power, alone, we have no power, and therefore, if you're gonna complain to us, complain to all three of us, because frankly...
Yeah, 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 no, I mean, I'll say my chairman about, I'm pretty sure about, you know. Now, the two they listen to.
Understood. So, Rudy, Rudy, the, the single biggest reason taxes went up was the value of the dam, not the value of the real estate over there, it's the earning capacity of the dam. The power rates have gone down. In the past, we negotiated a long-term deal with them so that there's no big spikes in the tax rates because of them. This past year, they would only negotiate a one-year deal. The value went down substantially. That's the single biggest reason for a tax increase, okay? We will reevaluate the dam again in April of seventeen and set a new, hopefully the value's gonna go up, but it's based on their ability to earn, and the ability, it has gone down in the last couple of years.
Then Mr. Ramsey, I don't try to, I don't try to do your job, because if I was here over there on your place, this is not what happened, I'll tell you right now.
Well, that's not true.
Believe me, not what happened, because, you know, before, before I'm gonna spend one more penny, anybody that comes, Joe, this, you know, anybody, I would say, whoa, stop over here, man, we got no money, you gotta wait the next year. If you want a new truck, you want new this, you want new that, but unfortunately...
Well, you're into spending, though, so...
You're gonna control it, no.
I'm talking about the value of the dam and why the rates went up.
We don't control the spending either, you do through the budget. You voted it in.
Through the budget.
You vote, who voted the budget in? The taxpayer.
You refuse, when I come to see you, say, Mr., you know, Mr. Brats, stop like that. I want new car, you say, wait a minute, you're not gonna get a new car now because this, this and that, you talk to me, you gotta talk to me, because I don't know what's going on in town.
Your spending is done by the budget and the warrant articles, Rudy, not by us.
But if you accept the warrant articles, you accept it, right? Or no?
We accept them to put them out to vote.
Yeah, but you accept it, and you buy the accountant's to your place and give you the warrant article, I want this, I want that, you accept it, or no?
That's our responsibility, we have to do it.
We vote on whether or not we're in favor of...
You voted to accept it or to not accept it?
And, and the town in turn voted on all the spending matters.
We voted to put it on the ballot for you to vote, yes or no?
The voters approve the, you know, the expenditures, the voters did.
We don't set the expenditures.
Mr. Chairman, one more time before I go say that, if somebody asks you for something, and you know, and they are too seldom, and they know, that we don't have any money, Tom, that people complain, you got the power any which way to say, wait a minute, I'm sorry, not for this year.
Well, you know, in one, in one respect, you're correct. We're looking at, obviously, offering less warrant articles this year. Two that we have to offer, if we come to agreement, are, you know, the police contract and the fire contract. But then, we put those on the ballot...
Yeah, I understand.
And the voters are the ones that agree to it or not. It's not us. I mean, we're obligated to do those. But you're right, we, we are looking at holding back, because this is a year where people would probably vote no more so than this.
Mr. Chairman, you know how many minutes I missed? Zero.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, you know how many people they ask you stop, and you never refuse anything, except every day, three to one, two to one, two to one, three to one. You never said to Mr. DePalmer, I'm sorry, this year you can not have a new truck, because we don't have the money.
Well, you know what? We have done that during work sessions in past years. Remember the time that the, the, one of his predecessors came forward with a, a new, uh, street cleaner? And it was a street cleaner that also would clean, clean the, uh, the sewers? And we said no, 'cause it was just too expensive. So, those, that does happen at those meetings, at, at the work sessions. But, once we get the warrant together, it goes to the voters.
I mean, don't you think, you know, it's, you guys can do some, I mean, everybody complain, everybody cries, you know, why the taxi went out, why this, why that, and so you got to say, Mr. Green, oh, you bought the product? No, no say that, because the people who got to vote, let me repeat you one more time, it's one thousand and fifty people got to vote. Seven hundred fifty people, they are the good old boys. The good old boys, that's the one that they bought, oh, yes, you know, nobody bought that, you know, that's, that's, you know what I'm talking about.
Okay.
You're right, we bought, but, Mr. Chairman, it's nice, you know, if you talk to people, talk to people on Channel Two and, and, you know, usually they are recording a paper, that's, you know, that's for the birds. You know, uses the paper, the birds are active, you know, they put them in a cage, you know, that's what it is.
Alright, thank you, Rudy. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Did you give us your name?
My name is Ralph Lachman.
Okay.
And I'm a lowton taxpayer, that I came down here because of the, I, I don't know, Rudy, I don't even know who it is. But I came down here because I was concerned when I got my tax bill, I mean, really concerned. I'm a retired military, retired from the state, in type of social security, I haven't received a, a decent pay raise in over four years, yet the tax rate jumped up eleven percent.
Right.
We citizens, and I vote, every, every vote, I vote, yes, we voted in a lot of the warrant articles, but we didn't know the dam was gonna drop twenty million dollars. Like, I don't know, Rudy, but basically, same thing, I'm saying, as a citizen in your town, I'm very concerned at this point if I'm even gonna be able to live here after next March, because I'm on a fixed income, I'm not getting percentages from social security or anybody else, and I cannot afford these tax increases. And if, it's simple math to me, if the dam value and everything else, the values go down eight million dollars, your town spending needs to go down...
Absolutely.
Pretty close to that. You know, enough to make up the difference, so the town spending's gonna go down, and I'm sorry, but, did I, you just say it's gonna be forty-three warrant articles?
No, no, there was last year. Last year there was.
And it was, it was out of this world.
Right.
And I think you're gonna find that, that people like me, and I talk to a lot of people in town, because I've been here for twenty-one years, I know a lot of people, we're not gonna vote the warrant articles this year.
Right.
We're really, we're, we're talking, a lot of people talking, and we're just not gonna approve any spending. So somewhere along the line, I, I just want you to know, that as a taxpayer, I've given the point where I may not be able to afford to live in Littleton anymore. I may have to go open my road, or someplace else, and then find a place to live, or, or even Vermont. The other thing is, I don't know how to do this. I'm gonna be coming a lot more and more to these meetings, because I, I wanna find out how to do a lot of this stuff. I wanna put in a warrant article this year. I'm gonna find out, I gotta talk to somebody about how to do that. Because I'd like to see the veterans' tax exemption go up to a thousand dollars, which is authorized by the state. So I'm gonna try to put in a warrant article to do that this year. But I just want you to know, as a, as a town, taxpayer resident, the spending is getting out of control, compared to the budget, you know, we just can't afford it anymore, especially those of us on fixed incomes, and that's a lot of us.
Right, we understand, Ralph.
We understand your pain, we even feel part of your pain. Not all the increase was the town budget.
Oh, I realize that.
Okay.
You had, you had a county, you had a school, but.
And the sys, the sys, the system is, the system is a catch-up system. Unfortunately, you and everyone else are nailed now with the new higher tax rate. And the time to react is at the polls in March.
We did that last March. We didn't realize that between then and now, you're gonna have such a decrease, it's gonna raise your tax bill. That's what happened, right?
Nor did we, we didn't know either. We didn't either.
So how can we vote in March, if we don't know that stuff ahead of time?
Understood. Absolutely understood.
That's, that's why, basically, we're just saying, all we're saying right now is, we will not approve anything, period.
That's the way the system works, that's my, that's what I was getting at. That unfortunately is a catch-up.
Yeah.
Um, you've gotta react to what happened. And I suspect that warrant articles will have a more difficult time this March to react to the higher taxes.
Right.
It's natural, it's, and unfortunately, it, there's a lag of a year that you suffer, as does everyone. But I don't know a better system. We didn't know that the evaluation was gonna down any, go down any more than anyone else did. It's a, it's a, it's a valuation and it touched on it, it's.
But it seems to me that, that before you put articles on the budget for twenty sixteen, because we're just now getting our twenty sixteen bill, right, then we're getting our twenty sixteen bill, you should have known in March that all of this was gonna happen somehow.
Didn't, didn't.
You know, we, we can't do, we can't, we just, people can't catch up.
It'd be great enough. We, we don't, we didn't.
Can't catch up, that's all. Now, we're gonna go board to say, town, we're not gonna allow you to spend any money.
The way, yeah, that's the way it is.
I've even, I've just talked to, I know Mike Gilvin real well, I know Brian Wardman real well, I know he spoke to him real well, and I'm starting to think about running for selectmen with a, with an agenda that says, no cost, period. We approve that stuff over the next three years.
You know, and if I could just speak to it, just as your town manager, I would say that a lot of what goes into the tax rate is what happens all year in the preparation for the budget. And this board has been very good at looking at creative issues, you know, that, that don't happen overnight, but to explore different ways to do something more efficiently, or to generate revenue from other areas, or to help spur economic development, to increase the, the overall assessed value of the total town. But in this case, really, it's.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying, but the Riverwalk, the money we put into the Riverwalk as taxpayers, we approved that, I agree, we approved it, we didn't know the dam was gonna drop, we approved that. But as taxpayers, we're getting no payback from them. The town, the businesses might, but the businesses aren't sharing it with us, and the businesses' taxes, they're not, they're not adjusting up.
So that's not exactly. Not entirely accurate, because actually, none of those expenses are in this tax rate. So those funds for this tax rate have not been expended, and the taxpayers will see a benefit in that the property value increased. For example, we have just one property that's planning on next year in coordination with our activities by adding a three million dollar addition to their property. And so every time someone approves a property like that, that, that generates additional tax dollars. So if you, if you lose, you know, say, twenty million dollars in utilities, well, every, every commercial property, industrial property, or whoever that, that increases their value, that helps, that helps eat away at that a little bit. And any economic activity like that also helps diversify the, our tax base, because we're, we're property tax-driven. And so with a really heavy reliance on the dam, these kind of things happen. And also, you know, I think that this board, and I am very sensitive to holding expenditures under control. And last week, I gave a brief presentation of where the tax increases came from. And while some of them work from the town, if the dam hadn't increased, it would be, there'd be very minimal increase from the town. But I have a, I do have a little handout here that can explain to you where is the increase coming from. And if you see, there's a, the town's portion is here, but if I take the dam out of that to show you where the increase comes from, it, it would be almost none from the town. And, and I would, I would suggest before, you know, really, you know, harking on the municipal side of things and the town side.
Well, it's not, it's also the school district.
Right.
We don't have much control of the county, everybody's already gonna make control of the county, they don't even have meetings down here.
There are, there are delegate meetings, and so the town's, yeah, the town's state representatives are also delegates to the commissioner, they basically act like a board to the county government. And for county issues, you can really approach your, your state representatives, or your commissioners, to act like the selectmen.
And I understand what you're saying, and I'm, I'm not, I'm just letting you know as a citizen.
Understood.
It's really hitting me hard, as a, as, as a retired military, I, I get no increase, but I gotta keep paying all this. Now, my wife in January is gonna pay a hundred and four dollars a month for Medicare. I'm not getting a hundred and four dollars a month increase, but now I'm gonna have to deal with taxes again. So, the other thing is, is, all these meetings, are they listed on the website? All these, these approved meetings, everything. Because I was looking on the website, and I didn't see a lot of, of selectman-type meetings on there, except for the regular meetings, so. Okay. But I just, I just came here tonight to let you know, as a citizen, when I saw that tax bill, then I just, I, you know, I just went.
As a citizen, so do I.
And a citizen, we're not gonna be able to do, do it much longer.
Right. Understood, and we're sensitive to that, Ralph, thank you.
Okay.
The good news is, or the bad news is, the taxes went up for everyone. The good news is, sixty-some-odd percent of the homeowners, their assessment went down. Does it equal out? No, but it helps a little. For the thirty-some-odd percent that they didn't go down, myself included, I get a double whammy. Valuation went up, and taxes went up.
Yeah, but over, over the twenty-one years I've been here, I see taxes go up every single year. Even Walmart moving in, Home Depot moving in, Lowe's moving in, I don't see where it makes that much of a difference. At one point, it dropped, it started dropping some percent, and one other started dropping, but then, we just saw all these big businesses coming in, and didn't see that big tax increase that they should be paying.
I believe we were over thirty at one point, weren't we?
We were, we were at thirty-five back in the nineties. And I, and, but when you have these five-year assessments, or a ten-year full assessment, then it, it throws off, you can't really do a comparison to the year before, because you're now dealing with a new valuable, so to speak. But, but we clearly understand, for all of us, we, we all felt that increase. And of course, if you're retired, like some of us are, you feel it even more so, we, we understand that, Ralph. We are, obviously, as I said to Rudy, looking at, you know, the years when we have these kinds of things happen, clearly, we're gonna look doubly hard at perhaps pushing something off a year or so. But, you know, in part, that's kicking the can down the road as well. If, if, if Mr. De Palma has a piece of equipment that's eleven years old, and he can't get it, he can't get it, what do you call it? Getting with the year.
Repaired.
Huh? Well, he can get it repaired, but, but he can't get it passed on an inspection. Sooner or later, we have to replace that truck. And it's that almost fixed cost aspect of running a municipality, even a small one like ours, you've got things that have to be replaced, you have roads that have to be, you know, repaired. And that goes on, and you have sewers that have to be fixed. And so, that's part of it, but clearly, the big hit this year again was that the assessed value in all these areas, including that, the dam in particular, really drove our rates up. And, and, but we're sensitive to how that affects everybody here in town. So, you know, as we go forward, clearly, when the warrant comes out, one of our concerns is always, everybody, you know, they, they don't, obviously, when you're in the voting booth and you're voting on warrant articles, you're not adding up the impact, you just vote yes or no all the way down. And then, of course, at the end, that's when we get the, the result, so we understand that. Thank you for your, for your comments, and thank you, as Rudy says, well. Yes, sir.
Just wanna throw in a couple of comments that will lead to a question.
Okay.
Okay, so at twenty-five dollars plus this new tax rate, I wouldn't have you with that either, but if you compare Littleton's tax rate and Littleton's services with the surrounding towns, Littleton is still a bargain, in my opinion. Secondly, I've never known that the so-called good old boys were in favor of high taxes.
Oh.
That's not their motto.
Just about, I say, who's go to vote, we're talking about a vote.
Yeah, but you're talking about seven hundred people.
Seven hundred fifty people, they are good old boys, you know.
Right. Yeah. And I would hope anybody that's really concerned about their taxes will make a similar visit to the school board.
Yeah.
Twice the budget, half the scrutiny.
Right.
Now, my question, can you review for me what happened with the Moore Dam assessment? I know it was at one seventy-seven million for several years, and then it went up, and then it's, a year later, it went down. What was the process, what was the rationale?
So when we, we assessed them in April of fifteen, two.
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight. They contested that, and we were heading for Superior Court. They, they contested that, they weren't gonna pay. We billed them again, the same amount in sixteen. They said they weren't, they were gonna contest that as well, and we just simply started negotiating. So the settlement was, they dropped the suit on the fifteen for the rate they're paying this year. So it's kind of a double whammy, where the value of the dam went down, plus we're making a concession on the, the outstanding one.
Okay, so.
So it's kind of melded together.
Okay, so do we owe them money?
No, they dropped the, they dropped the contesting on the, on the fifteen.
So they accepted the two oh eight for point fifteen?
Correct, yeah.
And then for twenty sixteen, it's?
One seventy-eight.
So really, it's supposed to be really a two-year average of one ninety-three.
Yeah.
So, what that means is probably, a one ninety-three is closer to one ninety-three is more realistic for a one.
So if the power rate, power rates go unchanged, and theoretically, that value will go back up next year.
Right. So the jump from one seventy-seven to two oh eight, that was based on St. Susie recommendation?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
And did that seem plausible at the time? Or was it too good to be true?
Seem plausible is based on, I think it's called a cost or profit reduction analysis, is just how they do those. And it's a, it's, those are difficult dams to assess, because they don't really sell very often. And they're not a normal dam, they're a peak, peaking facility. We do have a sale that's scheduled to take place sometime here soon. But getting a realistic value off of how they allocate the, the purchase price of each portion of that agreement is not that realistic, you know, they may allocate the, the values.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
How are you gonna be started? You say, have, you're gonna go to Superior Court, that hasn't happened yet, for the dam?
No, 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 we were.
Or it's settled?
It's settled.
It's settled? What is the number? The number that you're gonna use for taxation?
Two oh eight for two fifteen, and one seventy-eight for twenty sixteen.
So it averages out.
One seventy-eight for two sixteen, and that's not in concrete yet?
No, that is.
It is?
So, everything, everything is settled.
So it's one seventy-eight, that's what's gonna be used for taxation?
For twenty sixteen.
No, we're gonna do it.
For twenty sixteen, and then that's gonna be good for a year.
But we'll reevaluate it April of seventeen.
Now you guess the right.
No.
It was a one-year deal, so it'll be reevaluated in April of seventeen.
Right.
And then the fund stats again with the new owners.
I'm, by the way, I just, I just, as Rudy says, I want the people to know, that's all.
Well, it just reminded me of what happened with the Moore Dam ten years ago.
Right.
Where we shot for the moon, and then we paid.
Right.
Deer for, oh, hell, we're ambitious.
I don't know.
Yeah.
No, you're right, because the seldomly that they were running the town ten years ago, they were not really, you know, I, in a quote-unquote, indulgent, that's why you would pay the cost of it. If you have smart people running the town, this is not what happened.
Any, anybody else have comments? Hearing none, I wanna thank you all for being here tonight and participating. And I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Uh, you may be doing anything not possible.
No, no, no.